All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Tonight, we have the invocation by Rabbi Mendy Greenberg of the Chabad of Bonita Springs. Rabbi Greenberg, good to see you again.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City officials, and good evening to all. As we gather here today, we'd like to extend our good wishes and blessings to the Mayor and City Council. May God Almighty bestow upon the leaders of this great city the wisdom and understanding to continue in the path of justice and goodness. Bless these individuals elected by the people in whom faith and confidence have been placed to legislate laws, making decisions that will affect the lives of their citizens. Let them recognize that this is not only a great honor and civic responsibility, but a holy endeavor as well. We stand here several days before the Jewish New Year, Rosh Hashanah. The reason we celebrate Rosh Hashanah on that day is because it's the anniversary of the creation of mankind, when God created Adam and Eve. That was the day that God tasked all humankind to be able to make this world into a world where God will feel comfortable to make it his home. This city is a big part of that beacon of light, to be able to make this world a better place. So mighty God, grant those assembled here to be aware of your presence and this holy mission. And may we continue to prosper with the message of freedom and the ability to be just and kind with continued acts of goodness and kindness. May the city of Bonita Springs continue to serve as a beacon of light for people of all faiths and walks of life to achieve the goal so powerfully stated in our Pledge of Allegiance, "So that America is truly one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." And let us say amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz. Deputy Mayor Purdon. Councilmember Carr. Mayor Gibson. Councilmember Corey. Councilmember Fulick. Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
All right. Public comment on the budget hearing. Anybody here to comment on the budget? All right, seeing none. All right, Mike, go ahead and read the required resolution language.
This is a resolution of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, Lee County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes for the City of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, for fiscal year 2025-2026, and providing for an effective date. Whereas the City of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, on September 17, 2025, adopted fiscal year 2025-2026 final millage rate following a public hearing as required by Florida's statute 200.065, and whereas the City of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, held a public hearing as required by Florida's statute 200.065, and whereas the gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempt from taxation within the City of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, has been certified by the Lee County Property Appraiser to the City of Bonita Springs Now therefore, may it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida. Number one, the fiscal year 2025-2026 final ad valorem operating millage rate is hereby adopted at 0.8470 mils. That is 0.8470 cents per $1,000 of assessed property value, which is greater than the rollback rate of 0.8062 mils by 5.06% mils. And the levy of an annual tax per sit year is made. Number two, the final millage rate is established to provide funding for the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, and the resulting increase in ad valorem tax revenues is necessary to fund various stormwater improvements, transportation improvements, environmental protection projects, community aesthetics projects, and other capital projects. Number three, effective date, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by City Council.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All right, roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz. Deputy Mayor Purdon. Councilmember Carr. Mayor Gibson. Councilmember Corey. Councilmember Fulick. Councilmember Fitzpatrick. Motion carries six, one.
All right. Item seven.
This is a resolution of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, Lee County, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2025-2026, and providing for an effective date. Whereas the City of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, on September 17, 2025, held a public hearing as required by Florida's statute 200.065, and whereas the City of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, set forth the appropriations and revenue estimate for the budget for fiscal year 2025-2026 as follows. Expenditures: General fund, $23,685,280. Special revenue, $5,294,500. Debt service, $1,560,730. Capital projects, $21,544,310. Total all funds, $52,084,820. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida. Number one, the fiscal year 2025-2026 final budget is hereby adopted. Number two, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by City Council.
All right, nice. Nigel?
Yes, sir. I know that Arlene's not here simply because she had a death in the family, but I brought it up at our last meeting, and in talking to our Director of Finance, Lisa, my understanding is that it would be a matter of if we brought up Arlene's salary that we'd have to put into general. And I'd like to move forward with a proposal that we increase her salary to $240,000 a year. I think everybody has seen the studies. With a proviso, there would be a four-year term with a 2% increase each year. In that way, it would be a line item, it would be in the budget and not coming out of general funds, as we discussed it after we'd approved the budget.
One thought. Just button.
Go ahead. Mr. Mayor, go ahead. All right, Laura?
I'd like to just tweak that a spec and make the city managers' raise $240,000 effective October 1st with a 3% annual raise and an extension of her current contract to five years.
Okay, so mine is 250 at a five-year with the 1% to 3% mirroring the same scale that the staff has annually.
That's 2% currently.
I think it's a window of 1% to 3%, or maybe 2% to 3%, I don't think it's static at 2%.
There's the voice.
Good evening, Lisa Roth, for the record. The question was, you want to know what the staff raises were in the budget?
Yes, so the annual, at the end of the year, it's a range of 1% to 3%?
It's actually, it can be based on performance, and it's a maximum of 5% for staff.
Okay, so 1% to 5%, okay, so I would say match it to staff. So just make it the same as staff, so that annually, there's the potential for an increase. And then every time we do this, it isn't like she's getting a big raise, and everybody's like, oh my God, we're giving her a big raise. If she can get the 2% to 3% annually that the rest of staff gets, then we don't have to wait every five years to give her a raise.
Does staff get a flat?
No.
Everybody get the same?
No.
No, they do not.
It's pay per performance, so.
So it's not a fixed?
So we would have to set the parameters for that, and then we would just annually say where that was at, I guess, then.
Or can we just do a line item?
Is there a better way to do it? Is there a better way to do that, Derek?
Yes.
I mean, we could do, similar to what I propose in my contract, would be 3% or CPI. You could do it, tie it that direction. That might be easier than trying to tie it to staff, an average staff.
Yes, and if I might add, there's a wage CPI, Consumer Price Index, that's driven to be applicable to wages. And we actually have that in our charter, so we could reference that.
So I think, so my proposal was 250 for a five-year with the 3% that Derek gets. And the reason I say that is because, you know, not only do I want to be comparable to the other cities in the region, but I think more than that, with the CIP that we just passed, we know how much stuff is upcoming. We aren't bringing on more staff, she's wearing multiple hats, and she's killing it. And she's done it, so.
I'm more than appreciative of what you're doing, and I truly am, so thank you.
Okay, cool.
So the public knows, our city manager has not had a raise in more than five years. She has not asked for a raise. And if you look at where she is in relation to all the other city managers in our area, dead last. So, so you're, we're not doing something out of the box here, we're doing something that's long overdue, so I'll amend my motion to.
Thank you. So 250 for five-year, 3%?
Yes.
But an additional five-year, she has two more.
Four-five-year, yes. This would be a new five-year.
Not an addition to?
Does it go at the end of this, too, Derek?
We would write a new contract, so I would treat it as five going forward.
Five going forward, okay.
So the amendment is to add Laura's fifth year, and then Jesse's amendment of the 3%.
Full term of five years now, instead of four.
And effective October 1st.
Correct, yes.
And she's worth every penny. Yep.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Deputy Mayor Purdon. Councilmember Carr. Mayor Gibson. Councilmember Corey. Councilmember Fulick. Councilmember Fitzpatrick. Councilmember Bogaz. Motion carries.
So that's, you guys are gonna add that into the budget?
Yes, sir, we sure will. Our budget resolution will be amended to reflect that as a judge each year.
Do we need to vote on the amended budget now? Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion, second, roll call.
Councilmember Carr. Mayor Gibson. Councilmember Corey. Councilmember Fulick. Councilmember Fitzpatrick. Councilmember Bogaz. Deputy Mayor Purdon. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, back at public comment on budget items. Any public comment on this budget? All right, seeing none, I'll close the budget meeting. I'll call to order the normal meeting. We already had the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we need to do the roll call again for second meeting? No, okay. All right, so now we are up to public comment on agenda items for this meeting, not the zoning hearing. Just agenda items for this meeting.
So we have, we have three public hearings. We have a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning, and the ordinance on the CDD. Those will be the three items we'll have separate public comment. So if you have anything else on the agenda, copy the agenda in the back, now would be the time to speak on those other items. The first one is the comprehensive, you're definitely on for that one. Comprehensive plan amendment, the second is a rezoning, a property associated that plan amendment, and the third item is a CDD for Vivid Shores.
All right, seeing no public comment, we'll move on to the public hearings.
The first item, do you want to read the titles?
Sure. This is the second reading of an ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, adopting an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map to re-designate approximately 0.7 acres plus or minus from the medium-density multifamily residential future land use category to the general commercial future land use category. Located at 4752 Bonita Beach Road Southwest, strap numbers 32-47-25-B4-00064.0000 and 32-47-25-B4-0030A0000, Bonita Springs, Florida 34135, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause, and providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
Good evening, Council, Mary Tornberg, Community Development.
Just for edification for everyone in the council, this first item is a legislative item, this is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. At the first reading, you remember that we had a little bit of crossover. We tried to consolidate the hearings for the efficiency of everyone, but there was a little confusion in the public comment. So we're gonna have public comment on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment first. The rezoning will happen only after the first hearing. So just the first item legislative, second item quasi-judicial.
Thank you, exactly. So this is the request for those two westernmost parcels of the project. It is solely to change the Comprehensive Plan map, future land use map, from the medium-density multifamily residential to general commercial, to be consistent with the other commercial parcels around there. I'd made my presentation last week, I can do that this week, otherwise the applicant is here, and then of course, there's public comment.
Anybody want staff?
And staff recommends approval, if you've already read the staff report.
Applicant?
Good evening, for the record, Rich Jovanovic, on behalf of the applicant. I have the whole team with me, I'm just gonna do a brief overview, and we'll be available to answer any questions you may have about the request. And Tracy and Mike are the owners, you heard from them at the last hearing. But this is a relatively simple request. We have the parcel in red. It's roughly .66 acres. It's currently designated medium-density multifamily residential, which is inconsistent with all the other properties located along Bonita Beach Road as far as the designation of the comp plan designation on the property. The request, as has been mentioned, it's a small-scale comp plan amendment, which means it's less than 50 acres. It just requires one approval from City Council, it does not go to the state and come back to you, it's just one approval. The property, as you can see, along Bonita Beach Road, is basically all red. All of the red is a commercial designation under your comprehensive plan, and the subject parcel is that gold-colored .66 acres. And from all indications, I think that was just something that was missed when the Comprehensive Plan was adopted by the city. The reason I say that is, if you look, this is a closer-in shot, you could see that all the property around it fronting Bonita Beach Road is designated general commercial under your future land use map. No real explanation, other than there was this catch-all category from, in your comp plan, that talked about certain lands that were designated a certain category, and Bonita Springs could be designated multifamily. But when you look at the lands prior to the adoption of your comprehensive plan, essentially, all of the lands along Bonita Beach Road was the category designated under the Lee County Plan, so theoretically, all of this should have also been designated multifamily, if you wanted to implement that provision of the Comprehensive Plan. The current zoning on the property is the Bonita Beach Road corridor overlay beach zone, which allows for commercial uses on the property. And prior to this property being zoned, the overlay, it was zoned, this is the piece. Red on red, that didn't really help. I'll have to ask him to help me change colors for the next slides. But you could see from this piece, it's always been zoned commercial. So our position is, the zoning's commercial, commercial uses can go on the property. The right designation under the Comprehensive Plan should be commercial. And our request is for this property to be designated commercial under your future land use map. Your staff agreed with that analysis, and so did your LPA. And our request is to have a small-scale comp plan amendment designating that land as general commercial under the future land use map, which would make it consistent with all the other lands fronting Bonita Beach Road. That's the summary of our request. If you have any questions, we're available to answer them. And we thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes. When was the last change filed with the Community Development regarding the plan?
No changes have been filed with Community Development regarding the comp plan at all.
Okay.
We've consistently had this request before you. I'll go through some changes on the zoning when we get to that.
Zoning.
Zoning, nothing, we've had a uniform presentation on the comp plan from basically day one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, we'll move on to public comment. Are we gonna swear everybody in for everything, or?
For this one, we will, yes. Oh, no, not for this one, I'm sorry, only for the next item.
Oh, for the next, okay. All right, any public comment?
I have many slips here, I'll call the names. Arlen Bartling, and he'll be followed by Vicky DeMaio.
These comments are to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. No problem.
Well, this is strictly on the Comprehensive Plan change, not the zoning change.
All right.
Okay. It, yeah.
There are two levels, yeah.
Well, he did sign on for 6A and 6B, so, okay. Vicky DeMaio. Aaron Steinbach. Diane Miller. Tom Vanderlawn. Sandy Kiesel. Terry Lenick. Martha Evans.
Okay, is there any public comment on the comp plan change? All right, seeing none, any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. Roll call.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fulick. Councilmember Fitzpatrick. Councilmember Bogaz. Deputy Mayor Purdon. Councilmember Carr. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item, well, it will be quasi-judicial, so Mike, go ahead and read the.
This is the second reading of a zoning ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, rezoning approximately five acres from the beach zone of the Bonita Beach Road corridor overlay and Residential Plan Development, RPD zoning districts, to a Commercial Plan Development, CPD, to allow up to 23,717 square feet of commercial uses and six multifamily dwelling units, located at 4570461246404659, excuse me, 544696 and 4752 Bonita Beach Road Southwest, strap numbers 32-47-25-B4-00055.0000 and 32-47-25-B4-0030B0000, Bonita Springs, Florida 34134, and providing for an effective date.
For the record, I don't, I don't come up with these. So this next item, this will be quasi-judicial. That means that all testimony provided by staff, by the applicant, the applicant's experts, and the public must be sworn factual evidence to be properly considered by the council. What I'd like to do, if you're here for this item, even if you don't intend to speak, I'd ask you to please stand so I can swear you in, just in case you change your mind halfway through. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Good evening again, Council, Mary Tornberg, Community Development. We did go through this presentation two weeks ago regarding the eight parcels that are requesting to be rezoned from Residential Plan Development and the beach zone of the Bonita Beach Road corridor overlay. At that discussion, Council provided a few conditions that they'd like to see or voice some concerns. And since then, staff has gone back and revised those conditions, which were included in your packets this week. In summary, where we've concluded, and this is also briefed in your memorandum that was provided as well, was that the live music would be reviewed at time of development order with a sufficient sound study showing exact speaker location, windows open, et cetera. The parking will be reviewed at time of development order. You will hear feedback tonight that the applicant is requesting to change that, we received additional information today. Staff still says that should be reviewed at time of development order, since we have not had sufficient time to review and analyze. The consumption on premises and live entertainment condition in condition nine. We recommend a conditional approval. In there, you will see that the applicant will have to come back to you from the first of either three valid violations, or one year, whichever occurs first. They will come back to you with those conditions, and you will reanalyze whether you'd like to keep what you have in place or make amendments at that time. And then there was also some feedback on the shielding of the parking along the residential, the residential side along the canal. And we do have a condition already in there that says that buffering is required, it needs to be an opaque screening. But if Council would like to add some type of condition that a 42-inch knee wall is required, we can, you know, happily do so in addition. With that, I will let the applicant go ahead and present. Unless you have specific questions for me.
Any questions for Mary? Thank you.
Thank you. Still, good evening, for the record, Rich Jovanovic, on behalf of the team. I'm gonna go over the modifications, and Councilman Corey, I'll get right to your question about when were the changes made. All of the changes that were before you were submitted to staff. The parking change was the one that staff feels they haven't had enough time to look at. And we don't want to make that a big issue, if that's something that, you know, the council says, you know, since our staff hasn't had enough time to look at our own parking standard, after I go through and try to explain it, we'll be.
They're thick. This is a shot at night. This is, this is the closest point and you can see the light, these are lights from our cars. Don't even really get into the canal. So you're not going to see car lighting based upon what's proposed with the mangroves. But again, if we're wrong, because we remove exotics, we have to supplement the planting to achieve the required opacity in the code. The, this is the outdoor consumption provision that was in your, your code. You see what we changed in the yellow? We're still required to come back for the one-year review, or if we misbehave and there are three valid complaints prior to the one year, we have to come back for you all to consider what you want to do with outdoor music. We didn't think that you also meant to take away the ability to people to have drinks at their table while they're having dinner. And the last phrase was the phrase down here that you could basically make the ordinance null and void, which I don't think was ever the intent. I think the intent was let's talk about the music and if it turns out the music's too loud, we would have to give up the music. This is where we added the limitation to nine P M. We'll add the limitation that there'll only be one solo performer. And hopefully that too allays concerns about what is the outdoor entertainment that's going to occur outside. Cause keep in mind, that's a dining area and that's, we want to have music that people will still be able to have conversation at their table. The parking. As, as we mentioned the last hearing, your code requires 194 parking spaces for the restaurant. That's, that's an awful lot of parking for, for the restaurant. And I'll show you a table that shows you what other jurisdictions have. They're not at 195 parking spaces. We didn't go the lowest. We didn't go the highest in what we're proposing. But we're trying to, uh, the indoor seating area is one per 100. That's a pretty standard provision in the city of Naples and other jurisdictions for the seating area. They say you need one parking space for 100 square feet. Other indoor areas, some jurisdictions default basically to their office standard, which is one per 300. That talks about bathrooms, talks about the kitchen, talks about storage areas and the like. And in our particular case, we also have a little gift shop that is part of the restaurant. We thought the appropriate standard for those non-dining areas would be the parking standard, which would be one per 300. And then a typical standard for outdoor dining is three per thousand. So that, and that's the city of Naples standard. So this, this standard results in our being required to provide 105 parking spaces of which were requesting credit for the eight boat slips, only eight, for the eight boat slips. So that's how we would achieve the 105 parking spaces on site. We provide a similar revisit period to where we come back to you and you can determine whether or not this worked or it didn't work. We think it will work, but if it doesn't work, then we'll default to what your code says will be required to provide valet parking, which was the original request. 97 spaces, provide the delta through valet parking. What we're asking you is don't require us to have valet parking 365 days of the year at lunch and at dinner. When we know the reality is we may need valet parking in the evenings during season. Not necessarily because of the cars, but for convenience of our guests who may not want to walk from where the parking is on the master plan to the restaurant. We're also committing to providing two eight-person shuttles to use when necessary to take people from the restaurant to their parking space. So if they don't want to walk back after they parked, or they want us to pick them up at their car to bring them to the restaurant, we will commit to having two eight-person shuttles. Think they'll probably be used at night or during inclement weather. But we're committing to that. And then we want to revisit that in two years. And let me, let me tell you why two years. And this is something I've learned, Rich Ivanovich's words. There's a honeymoon period for restaurants. They're very, very popular for a little over a year and then it kind of settles into, you know, what's the real attendance at the, at the restaurant. So that's why we picked two years instead of one year to revisit to see whether it works or not. If, if that's a non-car, if you want to make it the one year, we think that that's a little too soon. But we committed to a revisit period, just like the outdoor entertainment. We would come back and show you that it worked. And if it didn't work, we'll default to the code and provide the valet parking, which is, is exactly what staff was originally recommending. This was the change we made. It was my call to make the change because I thought I heard from enough of you that maybe the existing parking standard was too high. If I called that shot wrong, it's on me. It's not on my client. It was, it was my decision to go ahead and ask for this change in the, the ordinance at this time. Other jurisdictions range in size and we put the highest at the top and the lowest at the bottom. The city of Marco Island would only require 75 spaces. They're basically at one per four seats with credit for boat docks. City of Venice is at 78. Town of Longboat Key is at 92. And you see it moves up with city of Cape Coral at 154, all significantly lower than 194. We're asking for 105. Again, with the test period of one year to come back, if, if we're wrong, we're not going to, we're not going to let it be wrong because if our clients tell us we need to implement valet, we're going to implement valet. We're not going to wait, but we, we think we're right. But if we're wrong, we have a test period for us to come back for, and we have to come back at a public hearing to show you the data and you all have to say, yes, you're right. Or no, you're wrong. We want you to do X. So that's our proposal for the parking. This is the language that I just took you through with the number of parking spaces as well as the credit for the eight slips and as well as the two-year, uh, two-year period to come back. There were concerns about other restaurants in the area and how they operate and that they can't really stack the cars on site. This red area, and I, I know you can't see the number, but that's 25 cars stacked. We think that's sufficient stacking for people to come to the front of the restaurant, drop off and go park their car. We think that's plenty. So people are not going to back up onto Benita Beach Road like other restaurants do. So that, those are, those are the comments we heard. Those are the changes we were, we were proposing based upon the, um, the staff recommendations. I do have to read one other one in and I can give you a copy of it. But what we, what, there was a provision that talks about no trimming of mangroves to create views. We understood that to be related to not trimming the mangroves where the residents are. So, because we, we don't want to trim any of those. But we do have a right under your regulations to trim the mangroves by the restaurant, obviously to create views there. So we just simply wanted to clarify that the no trimming of the mangroves was related, related to the deviation where we're asking the mangroves to suffice as our required buffer. And that we would be permitted to trim according to the city's mangrove trimming regulations in other areas. So that's, that's, that's one change and I have hard copies for you all, but I can, I can, I'll read the provision since it's not very long. But if you want to hear, if you want a hard copy, we can give it to you. It says, "The mangroves that will be retained as part of deviation four pertaining to L D C section four dash eight nine nine in parentheses B in parentheses four D I, little I I shall not be trimmed for the purpose of providing view corridors to the water, but may be maintained and trimmed in accordance with the Florida Mangrove Trimming and Preservation Act." So we can't create any views where we're using the mangroves as our buffer. So with that, those are the revisions that we've made since the first, first reading. Hopefully we addressed comments that we received from the council with regard to the boat slips and the concern about boat traffic and with regard to, um, the live entertainment and the hours of operation for that. And with that, that's, that's our summary of our presentation. Obviously the previous testimony of all of our experts where we meet your code requirements regarding traffic, planning, et cetera. With that, I'll be quiet and answer any questions you may have.
Nigel?
Yes, sir. If you would be so kind to put the schematic up again showing where the boat slips are.
The master plan?
Please.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate the fact that you all actually have tried to work with us here. But my concern, and I, last weekend, the weekend after the previous meeting, I took a boat 24 footer down the canal. And I know that John said it's 98 feet, but a little bit less than 98 when you take mangroves and things into account. So I look at the eastern edge of that property. I am a boater and the first thing that came to my mind was that's going to be really convenient for me to take my boat down there, dock it, run up to seven 11 or to the In-N-Out store and becomes a access point for both your In-N-Out as well as seven 11 because that's what boaters do. And it's not wide, so I am not comfortable with dock spaces down the last 12 part of the canal. And, and just for the record, I-
Please hold all applause.
Yeah. And I've not spoken to any one of these residents in between them. This is me going down there and knowing. And what we'll have to put up with as a city is people coming in here, calling our desk with complaints that you need to get the sheriff's department down there. It's, it's problematic.
And, and I, I hear everything you just said. So again, we tried to, we tried to remove some from here to address people who lived in this area and move, remove some from here. If you prefer that we kind of remove them, I, I don't have the ability, I don't think drag the arrow, but I think what I'm hearing you say is you'd like us to remove these.
That's correct.
Those slips. And instead-
People don't have access to the parking area down at the east side, so they don't have access to, I mean, I'm old. I can still get out there. So, don't laugh. But at the end of the day, I can get out there and young people, that's what they'll, they'll beat feet. And there is nothing really accessible, especially in the evening and at night. Nothing like a seven 11 that's just about 100 yards away.
Well, if you'll allow us to recapture what we took away in the, at the point, um, which was in this area.
Can you put them closer to the restaurant?
Uh, I have to look at depths. I mean, to the extent we could fill this area right in here, we'll look at that. But, but we'll, I, I hear what you're saying. I'm, I'm kind of-
It's a concession. I appreciate it, but down there, that's a no vote for me.
Okay. Well, then we're, we're, we can remove those and we'll put up signs that prohibit any vessels from, I'm not a boater, so I'm going to use the word parking. I don't know if that's the right word or not.
And then just to be clear, the four-foot barrier, when we say opaque, meaning that 100% of headlights would not be able to be seen on the other side of the-
You have, you have an opacity requirement. Actually the hedge is at 6D. So it has to be an opaque hedge at 6D. So we'd have to supplement it so your, your, it works.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hi.
Yeah. Jim, the whole topic of parking. I, I look at, um, I feel comfortable that you're asking for 108 spaces for the restaurant uses. Like what I'm trying to reconcile is the incremental parking in the commercial space.
We're not asking for a deviation from that. We'll meet all of that.
Okay. The, the intended drive-through area, what type of facility are you considering there and what type of-
I can tell you what it won't be. How, how that, because it's easier for me to use terms like it, the answer is it's probably going to be, it's, it's definitely not going to be McDonald's, a Starbucks, a Wendy's, any of those high intensity. But there are some smaller restaurants. I just learned this. Um, what's it called? The, the ones with the- I learned that Skyline Chili actually has a drive-through. So that's a small little, I, I don't, can't use the word mom and pop restaurant, but we're talking about a smaller, we're talking, we're talking about a smaller provider. We're not talking about a Starbucks or something like that. There may be a, it may be a smaller coffee shop, but it will not be, it will not be a national drive-through.
Okay. Um, so to clarify, whatever that is, brand X, is that it would have both in, indoor seating as well as drive-through?
Right.
And I guess when we reduce the number down to 108 spaces or whatever was just said here, I immediately go to, you've got six residential units. Is that correct?
Yes, maximum.
So the, the number of parking that's allocated to each residential unit?
Will be met.
Plus the, um, I mean, is there going to be conflict with peak season and, and the spots required for your primary business, the restaurant?
No, there won't be. We, we, we have not asked for any reduction in parking for this building, which if, if you recall, that's, there'll be some residential units that are on the second floor and with our sweet shop. No reduction in parking from the required code requirements for that, nor for any of the uses in this building. The request was simply for this building right over here. And as you can see, there's readily parking available in front of those buildings.
Okay. Thank you. Laura?
Hey. Everything that, I appreciate the compromises by both the applicant and staff that really worked hard on coming to these tweaks. But I'm still very uncomfortable with the fast food restaurant because the space that's available will not be able to turn the cars around quick enough. And you know, Rich, that we cannot tell the client or the applicant to whom they may rent. So that you may say Skyline Chili, but you can bring in, we cannot legislate what can go in there.
I'm not asking you to legislate it. I'm volunteering. I'm volunteering the restriction. You can't impose it on me. I can impose it on myself. We can impose it on ourselves. So that's, that's why we're saying we'll put similar to McDonald's, Wendy's, Starbucks, things like that. We'll put in there. We cannot have that.
Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A, of course, yeah.
Well, I would like it, but.
Why did you throw Chick-fil-A in there?
I know.
What did Chick-fil-A do?
Anyway, anyway, we, look, first of all, realistically McDonald's isn't going there and neither is, neither are any of those other users. It's going to be a smaller type restaurant that, that also would like to have a drive-through. I don't see any real risk that we can't-
The ingress egress isn't going to be too, you know, because the cars, if you go to Chick-fil-A, they have it down. Well, now they have two lanes and you got to go around and around and then out and then you turn a certain way.
Here's, here's where you come into the drive-through. And here's where you come out. So we stack them all.
And the exit to Benita Beach Road would be?
You come back this way. Come back out this way. And you come to the main entrance. There, we remember we only have two main entrances now. We're getting rid of a whole bunch of curb cuts that exist today. We've got this one. And we have that one.
Or seven 11.
It's, it's an interesting easement. I, I can't, I can't, without their permission, allow people to get access to that light. I have the right for people to go to the seven 11, but they don't have the right to get to the light. Now seven 11 would have to say, we're going to stop you from doing that. I don't know why they would want to stop them for people potentially enjoying the seven 11 as they get to the traffic signal. But I can't promise you that I can get them to the light. So I don't want you to-
Okay. So the, the ingress egress, did you get rid of the one where you can go left or right or just?
Right now, the way, and again, it's going to be whatever, um, Lee County decides. Right now, you would be able to go left out at that entrance and left out at that entrance. But there were, I think there were a total of four access points originally along Benita Beach Road.
Where you could do one that wouldn't, left or right.
Right. This is, these, these are the two right now. This one and this one. And yes, you can go left out at both of those.
And the reason for getting rid of the one where you could go right? Instead of building up more traffic down Hickory Boulevard, why not like get out and go back?
Well, you, you can't. I mean, you, I, I, maybe I'm not following your question.
You can go left or right out of both of them.
You can go left or right out of both?
Yes. So yes, you have the ability to go back to the east out of both of those entrances. Those are left-ins off of Benita Beach Road. And it's right-in, right-out also. And there's also the ability to go left out at those entrances. So you don't have to, you don't have to get back on the road and do a U-turn.
And it, and the restriction on the type of drive-through would be in perpetuity? Even when the property's sold?
Yeah. It'd be a condition of the zoning, so it would not, it would be a prohibited use.
Okay. Thank you.
Jamie?
Yeah, I want to thank you also. Um, I think a lot of great feedback came to us. But I have to, um, on the parking, which we've all talked about, and I appreciate you coming back to that. But just coming to staff today, I think that we should put that aside for today and wait for staff to be able to come back and be able to look at that with, um, you know, direction to us. And, um, I, I don't, I'm just not sold on the drive-through either. You know, I don't think it's consistent or compatible with the area. Um, you know, I just, I'm not a fan of it either. But that's just-
No.
No, no applause, sorry.
That's my thoughts.
Any other comments? Chris?
You want to hear from, you want to have a presentation before the public comment?
Could I, from staff again?
Real quick, I don't, just to come back to what Jamie said about the parking situation. I'm comfortable not decoupling them and just voting on it as is. I would just vote on it as is because I think if we do this and then we have to come back and do the parking, like, I feel like we need to pass this or not pass this. I don't want to do this five times.
I think one thing that's important to understand and, and why it might be beneficial to have staff is that you'll see it in the, in the, in a staff report, there's marked up copies. There's like a staff memo and then a applicant memo. Because some of the changes, and there's initial change here, ultimately if you decide to move forward in this, you're going to have to agree on which draft and which changes get picked out. And so I think it's not necessarily clear. The ordinance in front of you is the staff version. That's the version from, with a few tweaks that were made that were agreeable. Then there's other changes that have been requested, some, uh, some to adapt to council comments, others to adapt to the neighbors. So I think there's, that all needs to be made clear on what you're, what you're actually voting for at the end of the day.
And just to clarify, if I may, other than the parking, you're, you're, what I have up on the visualizer, this is staff's language with the two changes, as you can see on here. Your staff had that document in plenty of time to look at that. So that, that was not one, Councilman Corey or anybody else, that they didn't have adequate time to look at, as far as I know. So you have to choose whether you agree with our language or staff's language. Did you mean that you could totally null and void the ordinance? Did you mean the one-year period also applied to outdoor consumption? This language, they also, I believe, had an opportunity where we reduced the hours of operation. They had, they did see that. And we've also added a limitation to, could be only one performer. They haven't seen that. But there were no limitations before. Parking, I fully acknowledge your staff got that information late. And then the other changes, I don't think, other than the clarification of the mangrove trimming that I read in, other than that, I, I believe we provided that to staff and I think that's in your backup as far as the tweaks to the outdoor consumption and the null and void. I know it was in the staff report. It was mentioned in the staff report. But again, the original parking language that staff supported was reduce the number of parking spaces to 97 and then we would provide valet parking. Our issue with the valet parking was providing it 365 days.
Right.
A year. If you were to say that we have to provide it at, you know, at, during season in the evening, we could probably live with something like that. But to require it all day long or reduce the number of seats, this didn't make sense to us. That's, that's the reason we, we proposed the change. But if, if, if it would be more, it'd be easier if we all to consider today to limit when we had to provide the valet. We're amenable to that as well. Other than that, they've had, hopefully staff's had plenty of time to look at it. But I will first to admit, parking was something that they haven't seen the backup for the math that I just showed you. But that was that.
Chris?
So Derek, let me understand. If we pa, if we vote on this and let's say that we passed it, what is, what version of all this thing goes into the record? I'm confused as, so does, does the, the version that has been totally reviewed by community development go into the record? Or do we have to take what they've looked at and worked out and then add some other amendments?
Absent the, the most recent change that, um, that was read into the record by the applicant's counsel?
About the parking?
Staff has reviewed, we have the language for everything. And so what would, the action would be for you to make your motion if, if to approve with whatever changes you want done. So if there's a, we would approve it without, uh, drive-through or with changed parking conditions or with change, the approved noise or whatever other tweaks you went away. And then we will, we will pull the language that's been provided previously to craft a revised ordinance. Because it, you know, at this point, it's more, it's more likely that you're going to be à la carte with some of these conditions rather than just approve one or the other blanket.
All right. Thank you.
Nigel?
What about the removal of the dock space of boat slips along the Gary Road Canal?
You would just ask for that in the motion.
And in conjunction with that, is it removing them or moving them back over to that like T dock that was coming?
We'd like to move them back over to the T dock area. Or fill in, like I said, and I don't know the answer. It'll either be move them, some or all of them back to the T dock area, which was over here, or possibly we, and I don't know the answer. Maybe we fill in one or two here. So we don't put all of them back. The T dock isn't quite as big. But what I heard you say is basically give these up right here.
Oh, right down there. I don't want access.
I'm sure.
There, period.
I'm sure.
That I'm okay with.
We would move it. We would, we would put up signage that would prohibit any more, is it mooring of vessels? Is that the right term? Okay.
I had a question on the, uh, the opacity of the mangroves. I mean, say it meets it now, but you know, God forbid we have another storm that wipes it out. What makes us get it back in there quickly?
We have to replant it. It's a requirement. We have to meet the opacity requirement.
From, from here on out, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's perpetual. It's not, it's not Hurricane Rich comes along and all of them are gone and we have a get out of jail free card. That's not what happens.
And the, um, the stacking that you showed really only works if everybody comes in from the easternmost entrance. If everybody's coming in, you know, on the late side, you know, they see the restaurant and that's where they're coming in. You don't quite have that much sta, stacking. But I think the last time you showed it, you had like double.
We could. I mean, we could, there's, we, we were trying to be very conservative on the number of cars because you're right. I hope I went the right direction. We only, we could double stack right here. People coming in if we needed to. But we, we only, we only showed one. And again, this is without valet parking. If we had valet parking, then we could stack way more.
And so this parking, as it relates to the previous parking, is the main difference? Just the extra cars that you can fit in because of valet where you're going to double to stack them, you know, in, in that?
In the, in the valet, and I could pull that up and show you- In the, in the valet, and I could pull that up and show you what was the original valet plan. But if you'll recall, there was stacking in front of these parking spaces right here that the valet would park and they do their valet magic. And then there were some also right around the front here. So that was, that's, that's under that valet plan.
But other than that?
But all, and then, but remember, all these were still open and so were these over here.
So it's, it's really the same parking, it's just you don't have the additional valet?
We don't have the valet there, double stacking.
Put them in. So if, if you did have to go to the valet later, it's still?
Easy to implement.
Available later. But parking's always an issue. You know, and I just, but I kinda feel that it's more on the applicant. If you don't put in enough, you're gonna be the one that suffers down the road for it. I mean, other than people might start parking along the road, so, but...
And I, and I fought the urge to talk about other restaurants that clearly don't have
Enough parking.
Enough parking. I don't think we fit that category.
My other question was about the, the music. You had mentioned that the artists would bring their own amps. I think that's where we've usually had trouble in the past, is when they allowed the artists to use their own amps. I think it works out better when the restaurant or, you know, the place has their own and the artist just plugs into it. That way they can actually control the noise level where the artist, you don't know how much they're gonna be turning it up on their own amps.
Well, we, the thought is that we could have the sound engineer specify the, the type and size of amps and where it needs to be located, instead of us, you know, providing an amp or uni- I don't, and again, I'm not a boater and I'm not a musician. I don't know if there's such thing as a universal amp that anybody can just plug their equipment into and, and play? Or is it better to let them bring their own? To me, my understanding is it's really about their direction of where is the amp being directed? To make sure that the sound is going away from the residences. Again, that was our goal, was to have the sound go away from the residences. And still, don't forget, we still have to meet the noise ordinance. And we gotta come back in a year, or we gotta come back if we have three strikes. So we think with the sound engineer saying, the amps, using sound engineer terminology, have to be of a certain specification and they have to be in a certain location, which all has to be provided to your staff as part of the development order. We, we think that that works better, especially since we're just talking about a solo artist versus...
Yeah, and I know it's direction, but it's also the power of the amp, or the ultimate volume of the...
Right, and, and we'll have to specify the control that. And again, I only get, I gotta come back in a year. And if people aren't happy, you're gonna tell us no more outdoor entertainment, I'm assuming. Or if we get three strikes before a year's up, you're gonna tell us, nice try, you lost it.
Well, they...
Or there's another scenario, you're right.
To be safe, I, I think it'd be better if you guys provided it. That way you had total control over it. But I mean, again, that's on you guys, because if the artists abuse it and you guys get in trouble, you're the ones getting in trouble, not the artists.
Right.
All right, Jesse, you had a comment?
Yeah, I would just, I, I think it's best to have the sound engineer people do it. Because, I mean, no disrespect to the owners, but they're not sound engineers, so I feel like people...
Normally would be a sound engineer still would be telling...
And so having them give, give the specifications and then allowing them to then let the artist know what the specifications are is probably better than having them do it, in my opinion. And I think it's kinda like, and more so in a bigger picture, I don't like, I, the idea of granular control of business operations probably isn't the road we wanna go down. Because, you know, less measured individuals after us might abuse something like that.
And Nigel?
Yes, sir, just, it's a question, but are you gonna have entertainment inside the building?
The intention is to have the person outside.
I was just thinking of the Bodys. Mike used to do stuff inside and so you're not gonna have any sort of entertainment space inside.
No, the intention is outside focused away. Focus towards the inside, away from the residents is what I said that.
Oh, no, I understand.
I just wanna make sure that I didn't misspeak for the public to sit there and say I just changed what we were proposing.
I'm not against it, it's just, it was a curious question.
Yeah, open up for public comment?
We have thirteen speaker slips. When I call your name, please go to the lectern and restate your name and offer your comment. Ashley Osolsky, and she'll be followed by Jesse Osolsky.
And remember, please no applause. Thank you. Applause.
Or booing.
Or, yeah, or booing. Any general comments from the...
Throwing things, knives, switchblades, unchucks.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ashley Osolsky, and I've lived on Gary Road for about seven years now. Based on the location of our house, this restaurant will be about a hundred and eighty feet from my bedroom window, meaning I will be the person most affected by the noise and lights of this, of this proposed development. I wake up at 5:00 AM each morning for a full day of school. I'm a full-time cheerleader and I have a part-time job, so peaceful sleep is very important to me and my schedule. After the last meeting, when we got home, I had told my parents of the observations I had made. As I'm a junior in high school, I've recently learned about Aristotle's methods of persuasion and his rhetoric devices, ethos, logos, and pathos. I told my dad it seemed the basis of their persuasion was pathos and that theirs was more logos-based. Pathos is geared towards appealing towards the audience's emotions to create an emotional connection. Logos appeals to the audience's sense of reasons through facts, evidence, logic, and structured arguments. We heard them tell stories of what used to be and people's experience of a restaurant from twenty years ago. Our side presenting, our side was presenting documents, photos, and using logic to explain the environmental impacts. The noise impacts, the road traffic, the road traffic impacts and the boater impacts that would affect a residential neighborhood. Based on my understanding, they're asking you to approve a lot of changes to what the vision of Benita Springs is supposed to be and where we all want to live. Whether this is an emotional decision or a logical decision, please do what is best for Benita Springs, for the Benita Springs that we already know and love. Thank you for your time. We trust that you'll do what's best for Benita Springs.
Thank you.
Jesse Osolsky, and he'll be followed by Shanna Osolsky.
Can we use the visualizer?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if...
Antonio, can you do the visualizer real quick?
All right. First, I'd like to say thank you for all that actually visited the site and got to see firsthand what, what we're up against here. My, I guess my main question, and I've got a lot of stuff typed and I had to write a lot of notes based on what was presented, so some things may change. But the question is, what, what benefits does the city have for approving this? And why can they not design something that works within the current guidelines? Buying property with predetermined rules should not become a burden on the rest of the community because they aren't able to do what they want. There's still so much wrong with this here. We provided a map during the last meeting. There's, there's twenty-eight restaurants from US forty-one to the Gulf. So why do we need to break rules to do anything more? Some, and like I said, some of these notes are out of, out of order and I apologize. But what looks good in a two-dimensional image doesn't always look great in, in the three-D world that we live in. The very first page in the packet that I gave you is their own environmental study. Obviously, all the hatched areas are all different wetlands. Like I said, the, the... I actually had, had this prepared, but this is actually, I went down to the site the afternoon before the last meeting. And this is the exact location of the proposed stacking of the valet parking. That's that, and you could see right here, this is the, this is the bay right here and it's physically attached to the property. It's underwater at high tide. This is just a different view, but going into the property, I mean, that is tidal salt water. So some things that don't get talked about in this, and it's gonna get determined through the, through the development order process, if we make it to that point, is how are we gonna handle storm drainage? Like I said, the three-dimensional world that we live in here, Benita Beach Road's three to four feet above where the property is right now. And you could see that, that the water table is, is already right there. So with a parking lot being a completely impervious surface, buildings being completely impervious surface, where is the stormwater retention gonna take place? It's gonna have to go underground. In order to go underground, it's gotta be above the water table, be above the water table. This thing's gonna go up. So when you guys start talking about six-foot buffers or forty-two-inch buffers or four-inch buffers or whatever buffer we want, what is that based off of? What, is that above Benita Beach Road? Is it above this point right here? Because we're raising the site up four feet, five feet. You don't, we don't know at this point. So when you start talking about buffers and trimming mangroves and forty-two-inch walls, you can go, we get, we get car high beams coming into our house on a nightly basis just from the places across the street, because they're having to go upgrade and then, and then a high beam shine right at your house anyways. Yes, there are guidelines for trimming mangroves, and maybe you can ask Laura later what those are. But I don't think it's anything over twelve feet in height, which a lot of these are, you're not allowed to, from my understanding. The other thing is like, you know, they are trying to combine all these parcels into one giant, universal commercial, I got thirty seconds left, commercial parcel. We're, and get out of the Benita Beach Road overlay, that's wiping out all the rules. So the buffers in between parcels, you know, things to think about, unity of title, if they haven't done that yet. What happens if they go, if they, if they get all these buffers eliminated between the parcels? Then, then they wanna sell the fast food. I don't know if there's anything in there that can stop all that. So I mean, and then traffic. In addition to the, just thinking about the three thousand cars they're adding to the road, that's gonna affect emergency services as well and, and their ability to get to the property.
Shanna Osolsky, and she'll be followed by Todd Bradley.
Hi, my name is Shanna Osolsky. I really truly believe everyone here obviously cares about our community. And everybody, you know, however long you've been here, they've, I just don't want us to lose that small-town charm. Benita Springs is that gem. And, you know, I moved down here in two thousand and two out of college. And my parents are like, why are you moving where all the old people live? I absolutely loved it. It was great. I mean, it was beautiful. This town, Benita Springs, is nothing like Naples, nothing like Fort Myers. And building this large of a restaurant and wanting this much traffic and boat traffic and the pollution from the oil, the gas from the boats, the inexperienced boaters out there, there's just, I don't understand, like, what restaurants, if they wanna compare to other restaurants around, they're, they're all substantially smaller. So they don't have a huge impact as though this fast food restaurant will have in our community as well as this large, this is a very large restaurant. I mean, it's, it's, and I just feel as though the negative impacts that it's gonna have on our community is gonna be long-term, and we won't be able to fix it after the fact. Everybody wants to say, we'll address it later, and it never gets addressed properly. So many of the concerns, just like so many people, is the environmental impacts, the increased traffic, pollution, noise, the car lights, the large number. Even if you switch to twenty-eight boat slips, I mean, twenty-eight boat slips, tell me one other restaurant in this area that even has that many. Why do we need that many boat slips in that area? This is a bay, so it's not like you're close to the Gulf and the water changes all the time. A lot of the pollution gets caught in the canals and we, the residents, will go pick it up. We pick up a lot of different trash, and we have, but it's gonna be extremely difficult. What, are they gonna go out? Are they gonna hire someone to take care? Because we wanna protect our wildlife. We wanna protect, there's dolphins, manatees, crocodiles, alligators. I mean, there's so many different animals, the mangroves. You know, they say that the lights of the mangroves will be enough. I mean, if you, you're still gonna see in between the mangroves, there, it's not a thick hedge. So my concern is just, is this a long-term, you know, goal for the Benita Springs area? And is it gonna be beneficial to our community? Because like someone said up here, you guys will be getting the calls and the emails and the, you know, is it gonna benefit our community? I, I just, I don't see it at this size. I think that the size is extremely large for this small parcel. And it's, you know, I don't know. I just hope everyone on the council will consider all the community's input and just really think it through, because this is a very big decision. I mean, if you think about it, even with people coming down here, if the traffic is gonna be that extensive and people are gonna be backed up, they're not even gonna wanna come. They're not gonna wanna come to our beaches. They're not gonna wanna come to the restaurants. It's gonna affect other local restaurants that have been in business for years, because they can't even get there. I mean, I think about Flippers. Flippers is a small little restaurant and it's a local place that a lot of people like to go to. People are not gonna wait two hours to drive all the way up there. And it's just, I think that there's so many things that we need to take in consideration, and I hope you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Todd Bradley, and he'll be followed by Gregory Hill.
Todd Bradley, and I'm representing myself in this case. Usually I would be an attorney representing others. I live on Regal. My house was knocked down because of Hurricane Ian and I'm rebuilding. I'm still waiting to get in. And I will, I will have direct access view to the residence, or to the, to the restaurant and the property. So, you know, it's impacting me. But what makes this community so great is, is the neighbors. That's why I wanna come back, because when I was hit by that hurricane, everyone else came to help. It was amazing what, what we have there. And we have all kinds of people. We have doctors, lawyers. We have people in the construction industry. But the important thing is we're, we're bringing that together in that community and trying to, we, we have an interest in, in the economy. We're involved in it. We're, we're working in this community. And we're not saying you can't have a business, but you don't always have to maximize every single dollar and the impact of what you're doing. Having a, and for the record, Rich, saying that Skyline is a secondary... Well, yeah, but you, you did, you compared it in a negative way though to Wendy's. And so you gotta say that's wrong, you know, you have to correct that in, in the future as well. But in truth, go, go to the, go to the, the Skyline Chili in Naples and look at that parking lot, how much business they truly do bring in. And having a fast food restaurant there, having a drive-through, it's just gonna be a massive number of cars. When you come out of that intersection during season, it's backed up all the way from forty-one, which is why a lot of people in my community and also will cut through to get to forty-one. And they cut through the neighborhood, which they're throwing up speed bumps on these streets. And it's just gonna get worse as this goes. And so that's a concern we have in regards to the amount of traffic that this is going to generate. And again, it's not to say, don't do the business. We'd wanna have the business. There's a bunch of iguanas that live there, nobody really wants them there, truthfully. So you'd be, could be a better neighbor. But there's a saying, good fences make good neighbors. And that's really what this community is about, is taking care to make your property not impact others. As I've had to rebuild, one of the things I had to deal with was dealing with a fence. And I worked it out with my neighbors, how I was gonna do it. Turned out that didn't work for what the county wanted, what the city wanted. So we had to do something different. And it's not anything we like, but we're trying to deal with it. And I don't wanna impact their, their view of the, the water. And I'm consistent in trying to understand my neighbors and deal with it. And you'd be a part of the neighbors. You would become our neighbor as part of that, and we want that. When one of our other restaurants in, in like local area lost some of their structures in Hurricane Ian, it was our neighbors, people that are speaking today, who got those things, kept them until that restaurant reopened and delivered it to them. That's the type of neighbors we are. And we want that same quality to continue on, not just for us in our neighborhood, but for all of Benita Springs. We're in Benita Springs because we like Benita Springs. We're not in Collier County. We're not in, we're not up, you know, in Cape Coral. This is where we wanna be. This is where we wanna raise our children. And it's important to us that that quality of life be maintained. And it's important to us that that quality of life be maintained, but provide business opportunities as well, because we're all businessmen as well. And so that's important for us to, to do that. So I would just ask, and thank you, and Rich, thank you and your clients for addressing some of the factors you did, because that, that says a lot to me that you did address that, but there's a lot more work. And as an aside, one of the things I see as difficult is, is we're trying to, you know, prove things as you go along, and we really don't know what all's happening, and how this is impacted in regards to all the details. It's like, we're going to decide this later, we're going to deal with it later, and that's a problem for us, because it's going to impact us now. Thank you.
Gregory Hill, and he'll be followed by Arlen Bartling.
My name's Greg Hill, and I live over in that neighborhood on Tarpon Avenue. And first, I'd like to say I appreciate you guys, and I really appreciate this. There's not a lot of places in the U.S. I've lived in ten different states and worked in ten different states, and there's not a lot of places like this around, so we should all appreciate it. I appreciate the hard work that you do. There's not many neighborhoods like mine in the country, and again, I've been around, and I like to see it preserved. What this being proposed, to shoehorn this development in here is, doesn't seem like a very good idea at all to me. It, it doesn't seem like it fits. I can stand in front of Seven-Eleven, and I can decide to go to Benita Bistro, Sea Level, Prime House, Enzo's, A Table Apart, Wild's Cafe, Leonie's, Fish House, Muay Thai, Taco Mix, or if I want something light, I can go to the Warehouse Cafe or Sweet Melissa's. That's twelve that I can see from that corner, restaurants. I don't go there and say, you know what this corner needs? Another restaurant. It really doesn't. So there's that. In fast-food restaurant, it's just kind of antithetical to the whole vibe, if you will, of, of my neighborhood. I know all my neighbors. I'm lucky enough to live on Tarpon Avenue, it's got a wide sidewalk, we made everybody walk in our dogs. And yeah, we were hit hard in the hurricane, it took us months to rebuild, and everybody did pull together. It was a real, shared conflict, it was a real team-building thing. So we're all here as a community, as a neighborhood, and again, I really appreciate the opportunity to do this. I look at the environmental impact. I've been in construction for my whole life. I've been in, a member of the U.S. Green Building Council for a long time. One of the highest impact and most detrimental to the natural environment buildings you can build is a restaurant. You've got all that hardscape, you're going to have a thousand-gallon grease trap in the ground, right? And the next, we've had two hurricanes that flooded my backyard this last year, wiped out my pool and pool equipment. What's going to happen to that thousand gallons of grease? You have to pump it out, you can't put it in, in the sewer, that's why they have those grease traps. You have to pump it out, especially dispose of it. It doesn't belong in a waterway. We talk about the environmental impacts, and they're going to try and meet the, you know, the threatened species is, is the manatee, and they're trying to meet the requirements of the manatee plant. Well, that says if you take away so much mangrove, you can't have a net loss, you've got to put it back. Well, they're not going to put it back there. It's going to have to be put back, you know, somewhere else. That's not going to help the manatees that are there. I don't know anybody who's gone out on a kayak or a paddleboard and seen the manatees and said, you know what this area needs? More propellers. You know what I mean? It's just, it's, it's right next to a preserve, for goodness sake. We don't need to reduce their footprint there, we don't need to reduce their numbers there. It's terrible. I, I think it's inexcusable, really. And boat slips, boaters, gasoline, I, I don't think it's a good idea, I don't think it's a good fit for there, I don't think it's a good fit for my neighborhood, and that's why I came down here to just voice my opinion. And I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Hope you have a good evening.
Thank you. Arlen Bartling, and he'll be followed by Vicky DeMayo.
Good evening, Arlen Bartling. I'm the owner of Collier Global Vacation Rentals. We do rentals in Little Hickory Island from, and we do business from Longboat Key to Marco Island, et cetera. But I started coming to Fort Myers when we lived in Colorado, when you can actually fly from Stapleton Airport to Fort Myers for a hundred and sixty-one dollars round trip, and that was back in the early nineties. Came here and enjoyed Fort Myers, enjoyed the area, enjoyed Bonita Springs, and if it hadn't been for some marketing at Fort Myers in Naples, you almost wouldn't know that Bonita Springs existed. And, but what's occurred in this area is there is growth, there is improvement, and it's a great area to be, and you talk about hurricanes and impact. My lovely wife and I started a rental business in two thousand and thirteen with one property. Fast forward to September twenty-second, or September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, we had forty-seven properties that we managed for all the owners down there on Little Hickory Island. On September twenty-ninth, we had two that weren't damaged, plus we lived four miles inland, and we had eleven-foot surge there. So believe me, I know about hurricanes, been through six of them. The community comes together, and we improve, and we grow together. People would ask, and that came here, and first they went, they didn't come, they was very, very difficult to market Bonita Springs, because one, they knew where Naples was, they knew it was there at Naples, but, and we worked diligently to make that happen and find out how great Bonita Springs and Bonita Beach was. And people would ask about, well, let's go downtown to Bonita Springs. Well, where is downtown Bonita Springs and what is there? Until, and one of the great things that has occurred, and there's some controversy about after the fact, but until the rooftop Riverside Bar started and the Sugar Shack, what did you go down to Bonita Springs for? There's some things there, but you made the right decision at the right time, and this area is improving, it's growing. And the impact of this restaurant, we have a lot, a lot of families that come here, and they come to enjoy the beach, they come to enjoy the hospitality, they make family memories, and they love the area, and it keeps growing. And what I see is that times change, opportunities arise, and any time you're going to move forward, you got to make decisions. You make decisions that impact some people that they think it's negative, and they'll find out it wasn't a negative to the fact that they thought it was. But what I see here is this commission has an opportunity to make, to approve this for the foresight and vision of the Bonita Springs and Bonita Beach, and people will come here that live here, and I live here year-round, and, but the grandparents, the parents, the children, they'll come time and time again, because this is a beautiful area, and this restaurant will and can have a positive impact to the community if you give it the chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky DeMayo, and she'll be followed by Aaron Steimack.
Hi, I'm Vicky DeMayo. I live on Gary Road, and we are very concerned about the impact of this project. For one thing, we think it's a little overkill for that space, and the music, I, there's no sound engineer that's going to stop the music from coming into our area. That's impossible. I've lived on the water for decades, and I can hear my neighbors talk across the canal, and they're not using a speaker or an amplifier. I mean, it just echoes on the water, it's amplified greatly. So we're always going to hear that music, unless it's inside. I mean, I just don't know how you're going to prevent that. And the boat traffic is really a huge concern, because that's a preserve, and I've been there for thirty years on that bay, and I've watched a lot of things go on there. And, you know, we enjoy the manatees, and, and, you know, every time somebody builds something there, I heard somebody say at one of the very first meetings here, that, well, they can go someplace else. Well, if that's the attitude of every time we do a project, there's not going to be any wildlife, or, you know, we have to really preserve what we have and take care of it. That bay wasn't meant for, you know, it was dug or whatever it was years ago, and then these streets were added on. Well, the, a bay coming into this bay where they're going to be is very shallow most of the time, and these boaters, many, many boaters are going to be coming through here, they're not going to have the respect. Most of them are, you know, part-time boaters, they're not going to care. And another thing that bothers me about this, and it's kind of selfish, but I have that right, is all the people that, and you can't tell me this won't happen, these boaters are going to come up and down our canals continuously, and how many of them are going to be drunk? And are we going to have, put up with this all day and all night, just boaters up and down? Because I live the first canal in from the restaurant, right across the street from Jesse and Shanna, so I'm extremely affected also. But, and then the impact of Benita Beach Road, I just really see this as a curse more than I do anything else, and I liked Big Hickory, I have nothing wrong with that, I just think it's too big of a project for that space and for Benita Beach Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Steimack, and she'll be followed by Diane Miller.
My name is Aaron Steimack. I live on Regal Drive, two streets over from the property, proposed location of Big Hickory. I want to start by acknowledging the owner's passion and their desire to return to the area. It's clear that they have invested a lot of time, energy, and money into this project, and nobody would do that without a lot of grit. My family and I are new to Bonita Springs. We moved from Louisville, Kentucky last year and absolutely love it here. As a community, it's so important to have thriving local businesses. I don't think anybody would argue with that. My family's goal as neighbors is to, of this proposed project, is not to prevent it, but to ensure that its development is a success for the business and for the families that live nearby. We simply want the project to be done responsibly and within reason for the long-term health of our shared community, and I'd like to think we can all agree on that. I'd like to address a few specific points that have been raised, offering a neighbor's perspective. On the live music and noise, we understand the desire for live music to create a fun, lively atmosphere. However, we have serious concerns about the potential for evening outdoor music to carry across the water. As we established in the previous meeting, sound over water travels incredibly well. We also have established that this is very hard to enforce and would likely be impossible to do so. If there is live music outside, it absolutely will be a hindrance for the families nearby. For families with young children like mine, seniors, and residents who work early morning hours, late-night outdoor music would significantly impact our ability to rest and enjoy the peace of our quiet homes. Personally, we have a young daughter who's here tonight, who goes to bed at seven-thirty P.M., and my husband and I are both professionals who are up before five A.M. Having loud music will impact our lives and the neighbors surrounding us. This clearly isn't just about me, but I am here for the sake of all the neighbors who can't be here. The city's staff's recommendation for indoor music with sound piped outside within reason seems like a reasonable and fair compromise that allows for the desired ambiance without infringing on the quality of life for your neighbors. A comment was made about being allowed to be a good neighbor, but with these requests, as well as other special exceptions that they're asking for, it doesn't even, doesn't exactly shout good neighbor to me. It seems like they're out to make as much as possible at the expense of the neighbors, which doesn't give us any of the warm and fuzzies that want us to allow them to be a good neighbor first. That's why we're here fighting for what we believe is right. On the boat slips and water traffic, the proposed, proposal to add up to twenty-five boat slips is a major point of concern. While we can probably all agree that having more dining options for boaters is a good thing, a development of this size could create a significant congestion, safety issues in an already busy and narrow canal. Have you looked at the size of the canal? It is tight, and the houses are right there. If this is approved, I don't think there's enough education on the feasibility of actually making this happen without it being a nightmare for the neighbors. On the environmental impact and community protection, the plan to remove some of the mangroves and fill in part of the canal is particularly concerning. As we know, mangroves are not just a part of the scenery, they're multifaceted. Why not build on a different area of the property? Oh, that's right, because bigger is better. I don't believe that. On parking and city codes, the codes exist for a reason. They're designed to prevent restaurant parking and traffic from overflowing into adjacent residential streets, what would be, which would be a significant detriment to our neighborhood. The city's staff recommendations are based on established codes that protect the integrity and safety of our community. We support the city staff and their role of upholding these codes. I can't begin to imagine how this will all impact us in, within season traffic. On the property and zoning, we understand that this is a uniquely shaped property, but they chose to purchase it, they chose for the design to be done the way it was, chose this. There is a way to do it and do it right, and I don't believe that this is the way. I truly believe this can be done to benefit the entire community, not just a single business. The characterization of a process of a square peg and a round hole can be reframed as many as maybe, this is just, isn't the right spot for these grand plans, or maybe it can be an opportunity to work collaboratively to find a solution that respects both the business's goals and the community's well-being.
Thank you. Diane Miller, and she'll be followed by Sandy Kiesel.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diane Miller, and my husband and I have had a lot of experience with Mike and Tracy. I think we go back about six, seven years. And did, all of the people that are here, I own a home too, I own a farm, and, and I know how things change, and the future changes things, and building gets, but, but these people are really trying to make everybody happy. They went and redid the boat slips, the parking lot, they went and hired all these professionals to make sure that the city of Bonita Springs, as beautiful as it is, that they can enhance it. And all the people that are going to have jobs, and all the people that are going to be able to go there and reminisce about the Big Hickory that got washed away, and the new Big Hickory, and look how beautiful it is. And I get, I get everybody's opinions, but the fact is, when was this zone commercial? Does anybody know? Do you, could you tell me when it was zone commercial? Before I was born. Okay? So that's the reason I'm thinking here. When you buy property, you have to look at everything around it, and it is zone commercial. And I think everybody in this room can get along. I think that they can make, Mike and Tracy will do anything and everything they can to make it a pleasant experience for not just the homeowners and the boaters, but also the people that want to come and visit Big Hickory. That's all I have to say, because I really think everybody can get along and make this a successful venture. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Kiesel, and she'll be followed by Tom Vanderlawn.
Hello, my name is Sandy Kiesel. I live on Bay Point Lane. We bought our house about ten years ago, and we have just recently become residents of Florida, so I'm one of your newest voters. We did a lot of research before we bought our house, and we searched everywhere. I know that this is the first time you're seeing me here, except I was at one meeting a while ago. I have been sending letters, I've worked with the building department, I've sent letters to my representative, to the mayor, I've made phone calls to you to try to express my concerns, because I couldn't be here due to work travel. This, this is my backyard. It's a beautiful wide view, it's mangroves, it's peaceful, it's quiet, it's always quiet. There's no, not very many boats that go through my yard, and I looked for ten years before we bought this property, because we wanted peace and quiet in our backyard. And now this rezoning, this use of this property is going to take away my paradise and turn my backyard into a freeway. I want to talk a little bit about Hurricane Ian, and all of you have a copy of what I'm presenting here. Hurricane Ian, before it happened, when we bought the property, the high tide was about four feet at king tides below the surface. Now, because that bay was totally filled with sand, we're only about a foot on a normal high tide. And when we have king tides, the water is literally over the road. So what's going to happen now, when we have boats that go through, who have no responsibility to the neighborhood, create some kind of a wake, and it's washing over our road? And remember, we're talking about twenty-five boat slips for restaurants that's open hours and hours a day, where people come for maybe an hour and a half for dinner. That means fifty boats an hour going through my backyard. Put that in perspective here, fifty boats an hour through a narrow canal. And I am a boater, I love boats. Let's talk a little bit about the geography and the, the traffic and the boat traffic. When it's coming through that narrow canal, we live on the very end of that point. The boats go up on angle to come around that point. A boat on angle throws a bigger wake. That's going to damage our riprap. We already repair the riprap, and I'm constantly on my back porch asking my neighbors to slow down and explaining to them. When it's my neighbors, I can go to them and I can talk to them about it, but when it's strangers, how do I do that? When it's fifty boats a day, how do I do that? Noise level, water travels, noise travels very significantly over water, and when it does, you can't stop the noise. So the music, the road traffic, Benita Beach is really noisy, and if they take out the mangroves and put up a fence, it's not going to stop that noise. And if they take out the mangroves and put up a fence, it's not going to stop that noise. And I know I'm skipping some of this, so you have it in writing, so you can read it, but I only get four minutes. On traffic, the traffic study shows more than three thousand more cars a day. When it's season, I sometimes wait fifteen minutes to get out of my street. We've already approved Cabana, that's gonna have a restaurant, a spa, a, a resort. It's all those extra cars, how am I gonna get out of my street? It takes me an hour to get to seventy-five now, and now we're gonna add this in? There's no room for that with the traffic patterns we have today. So here's our request. We reject this project. If we choose to do it, we do not allow the marina, we do not allow the boat docks.
We can read that, Sandy, your time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Tom Vanderlon, and he'll be followed by Terry Lenick.
Good evening, my name's Tom Vanderlon, also live on, uh, Baypoint Lane. Thanks again for the opportunity to, uh, give our views on this project, so thank you for that. Uh, for myself as well, again, my backyard, live in that same narrow, uh, canal area where everyone will have to go around to, uh, get to this restaurant complex. So that's one of the biggest concerns I have, is really around the boating part of this proposal. I think, uh, doing something with that land would be a positive for the community. It's not really a, a nice area as it sits today. But as someone said, square peg in a round hole, I think is what we're looking at, uh, at right now. As Sandy mentioned, what we're experiencing today, just in the la, since Hurricane Ian, is a much more ingressive water. Uh, the Baypoint Lane, actually, is you, it's a private road. Quite frankly, wasn't done well, didn't have much to do with that. But, uh, what's happening today is virtually every rain, we're underwater, we're driving through, uh, six to eight inches of water going through there. So any of the boat traffic that's coming through is just gonna exacerbate that. As Sandy said, we're, we're happy to engage with our neighbors in discussions about how to move through that area. That's gonna be incredibly difficult with people that don't live in the area, won't have the same, same respect at all all these people do, and we've always had a really good experience in engaging with our neighbors. So we appreciate that. So the, we'd really say that, at least one of the neighbors told me, that the evaluation of the tide, I think you really need to make sure that that's an accurate assessment of the tide, uh, that it's at the actual high tide, uh, time. So we actually are looking at the right information on the environmental study. So I'm, I'm out, like I said, I'm out there every night, I love it here. Like, uh, Sandy said, we just decided to become residents of Florida. We're happy to be here, we're happy to be in Benita Springs. We're, we look forward to, uh, the area improving around us. But we wanna do it in a way that's responsible for everyone in the area. As you can see, this is probably closer to residential than many of the other things that are going on. So probably higher respect needs to happen. As Sandy said, the, uh, things that we're looking for then is really the boat docks are probably the most problematic part of this whole proposal. The secondary for me is the, the noise. Uh, I think we, as someone mentioned, maybe having indoor music that's piped out may be a nice compromise. But we also might wanna consider that that bay is, uh, got highly impacted by Ian. If we're gonna increase this amount of boat traffic, trying to get in there and maybe dredge that thing out, cause I think there's gonna be a lot of inexperienced boaters gonna have a problem, uh, in that bay. As well as for us with the riprap we have, we're already doing repairs every year as it stands. I don't think this is gonna help us. Uh, we would say that we either like to see some way helping us supplement and protect our property if this goes through, that you would consider that either through some direct action or some kind of special assessment that would help us, uh, deal with whatever happens with this, uh, development. So again, I appreciate your time, love living here, looking forward to spending, uh, the rest of my life down here, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Terry Lenick, attorney for Benita Fish House Restaurant, and he'll be followed by Martha Evans.
I guess you, uh, my name is Terry Lenick, I guess you'll, uh, have the suits come in the, at the end. I represent the Fish House Restaurant. We're mainly, we, we, we have no problem with any type of competition with, with, uh, with our restaurant business. There's plenty of, there's plenty of, uh, people out there. Our main concern has always been the traffic. We've had to purchase a large parcel of land to take care of our traffic. And we were grandfathered in, yes, we, yes, we were. The problem with this process, and it's a process problem, is that if these people came in just simply with the rezoning for commercial, and they go in the development order stage, you would then look it over for the traffic, and if they have to have an XL, Dcel lane, or they, the, uh, stacking within, et cetera, like that, it would be looked over by the Lee County Traffic Engineer, because they're involved with both the, both sides, Collier and Lee County side of Benita Beach Road. But that's not the case here. Plus, if it did, if you came in with, without the PUD, or PDD, as it's called here, they'd be able to make the, make the changes. Once you come in with a PDD and you go at the development order stage, what happens if the traffic engineer there says, oh, we need an XL, Dcel lane, that the, uh, uh, the stacking within doesn't resolve the traffic issue? The real problem is, is that you, you then have to go in through a deviation. Is it a minor deviation so administration can do it, or is it a major deviation? Then he has to come back before you. I guess what I'm trying to say is that coupled with the vegetation issues, is those issues have not been decided. If you say no to this project, which, which we would, would, uh, hope you would consider at least, then at the very least, at that point in time, they could come back for commercial property with, with, they could get some variances or special exceptions that they needed, but it's zone commercial. And they could build the project in accordance with, with the, uh, standards to, today. They're not entitled to the highest and best use of the property, they're entitled to a reasonable use of the property. We're not against it so much as we are for getting that traffic issue resolved. Because I believe if it doesn't get resolved now, it's not gonna get resolved at, before the traffic engineer, Lee County. You think he's gonna say, oh, you need an XL, Dcel lane, we need to move everything? If that's the case, then that's gonna change everything within. You need to get the traffic issue decided now. And the Lee County, uh, Department of Transportation has not reviewed this as if it were a final, uh, traffic analysis. That takes much more, that takes much more, uh, time and standards and, uh, processing. I'm not saying that their traffic engineer may not have had a, had a good plan. All I'm saying is the county and the government, uh, this, we, you guys don't have a traffic engineer. You rely upon Lee County for this particular issue. This has not been really resolved. And that needs to get resolved, I think, before you grant them a PDD. Or at the very least, continue this, send them up to Lee County, let them get that resolved from a traffic point of view. Bring down the traffic engineer to tell you that it's gonna resolve it. Cause otherwise, we're gonna go home, I'm gonna go home fat, dumb and happy, and you're gonna get the, get the phone calls every, every other day with regard to the traffic. That's the issue, in, insofar as we're concerned, is the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Evans, and Ms. Evans is the last registered speaker.
Thank you, I'd like to thank you for your time and attention. Um, whatever is done with the future development along our waterways, I feel that you need to take into account and consideration the impact that the flooding will have on our existing and longstanding neighborhoods. Within recent years, as has been mentioned, we have had, we have seen, and many of us have experienced, including you, the impact of the flooding of our neighborhoods. There has been a great deal of development and building in downtown Benita and along the Imperial River that has, in my opinion, attributed to redirecting much of the flooding waters from previous open ground runoffs. Before any future development around our waterway is approved, it must be proven through impact studies that there will not be a negative impact due to the flooding on the homes and the neighborhoods that are already established and have been living there for decades. An example would be removing mangroves. More intercoastal dredging and not providing for sufficient runoff areas is of great concern. Jesse tou- touched upon that, it's a great concern. I live two blocks back from where this is gonna be, I've been flooded numerous times. It's a great concern of, once you pave over Paradise, where is that water going? Guess where? Our homes again. Our communities and neighbors can no longer afford the rising insurance costs, high property taxes that further flooding will certainly create. We hold each of you accountable to ensure your citizens and the people that you serve are protected from flooding as much as is preventable by not destroying more mangroves, more runoffs and more areas for those runoffs. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak?
I'm Ron Jewerch from Little Hickory Island. I've, I've been, I've been listening to all of the testimony, uh, tonight, and also some of the comments from, from the council. And, you know, I'd love to see that land developed into something nice, and maybe a really nice restaurant would be a good thing there. I just, at this point, don't feel comfortable with it being approved or not approved. I, I worry about the traffic, I know at that point on Benita Beach Road, I think it's forty miles an hour. I think it slows down bef, in front of Coconut Jacks. And I'm just thinking that, you know, that's, it's gonna be a tough thing. I, I really would feel nervous about not seeing a little more going into the planning for the amount of traffic. And I also appreciate what the neighbors are concerned about. I think, I think those things could be worked out with the boats and et cetera. But I, I really worry about the traffic. But I really hope that there is a way to put something there, and hopefully a restaurant, so thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any other public comment? Rich, would you like to rebut anything?
May I ask? Can I, there's been a lot of testimony. Can I have just ten minutes to talk to my client to focus our thoughts and maybe make some proposals? Instead of going right into our, our rebuttal?
Okay, we'll do a ten to fifteen minute.
Okay. And this is, because this is quasi-judicial, uh, please don't speak to any of the council members in between the, and during the break time.
Okay.
And we shouldn't speak to staff either?
No.
Thank you.
Taking a break.